This is Wednesday, September the 12th, 2018. Notice is hereby given that a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas will be held on Wednesday, the 12th of September, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in the Grimes County Annex Building 114, West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas, at which time the following subjects will be discussed and acted upon. Agenda item number one, call the meeting to order. We are doing so. Would you please rise for the invocation? Remain standing for the pledge of the U.S. and then the Texas flag and I'll ask Gary Williamson, if you would, to lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity for us together this morning in your image. Look after us. Bring your spirit into this room and guide these commissioners and this judge as they make the right decisions for the county. Also, Lord, look after our first responders. Make them nice and safe wherever they may be because they are out there volunteering for our benefit. And, Lord, look after our military personnel. Make them also safe and help us keep our country safe. If it were not for them, we would not have this meeting this evening. And all the other people that are here, bless them on their way home that they may be in this weather that is coming upon us. Look after our East Coast personnel, that they are safe from your hurricane that you have created in the Gulf, I mean, in the Atlantic. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
You'll join us in the U.S. pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one straight under God, one and indivisible.
Would you be seated, please? We'll go to agenda item number two. This is public comments. We look forward to hearing from the citizens of Grimes County. We do ask that you limit your comments, if you will, to about two minutes. And if you do, please come to the podium, state your name for identification purposes. Mr. Bertley?
John Bertley. Judge, Commissioners, we got a problem, a big one. I've been complaining about the dust on the roads for some time. The dust has struck in all, 1696, repaving it and all, and it formed all this traffic to Axustu County Road 123. And we had a huge amount of traffic. And the dust condition got so bad that you couldn't see. If a car come back here, you had to wait a minute or two for dust to clear away. Now then, I came by that and I looked over there and on the north end of the road, all vegetation is dying, the trees. The top of the trees is right there where the dust like a gravity separation. The heavier stuff over on the ditch is killing the trees and the vegetation on the north side. It's not doing it on the south side because we have a prevailing wind that blows the dust to the north side and it's killing it. And I was coming down, Sharon and I come down with this chronic cough. We cough all night and my doctor said it's cause of the dust, that I need to move. So I put my place up for sale. I've been there for 35 years and I went over 244 where it was paved. And I got to thinking, when I saw that, I said, well, that's what the cause is. I can relate to it. So I'm documenting all of this stuff and I think the court has better do something quick because you're making our citizens sick. And I talked to J.R. Green and Bob, the county engineer back then, they told me, well, the north wind will blow and it'll blow the wind the other way. You have to worry about it. So I let it be. Talked to Blake, he had nothing to say. And I talked with the other county engineer. He said, well, I can't do all the roads. I said, we'll do one at a time. And I understand about the material and the cost and the freight. So what you need to do is find something locally that maybe that you can add something to it to cut down the dust. But the material you getting now is not any good. I asked for the EMSDA on it and they don't even have that. If you don't know what MSDA is, it's a material safety data and it should be gotten before you put anything down. Now, I've got this cough and I can't sleep at night and I don't want to sell my place. I put a lot of work and hard work into this thing and after 35 years, I don't want to move. But we gotta do something about these roads and if you don't, I will.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? I would like to note that as a public comment yesterday, the VFW provided a breakfast for a number of our first responders and military in remembrance of 9/11. Also, Chia St. Josephs provided a lunch and both of those meals were provided free of charge. And I thought that was just outstanding recognition from a community group and a business group in our county to share on their behalf in that way.
I have an announcement. I'd like to announce that today, Napsota Grimes County Business and Retail Expo will be held at the Grimes County Fairgrounds from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. It will highlight local businesses and restaurants. You'll have an opportunity for business networking, door prizes, food, a kid's corner, and a job fair. Admission is free and it's open to the public.
And the restaurant's usually bringing snacks. Are there any other public comments? And finally, are there any other public comments?
No.
With that, Commissioners, with your permission, we're going to move a couple of agenda items. I'd like to take care of agenda item number five. That is Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, County Extension Agent Alan Homan. And consent, agenda item five says, consider and take action on the proclamation to designate October 7 through October 13, 2018, as National 4-H Week and authorize the county judge as signatory. We have a copy of the proclamation that's going to be presented today. Mr. Homan? You brought your team with you?
Brought the team.
Okay, glad to have them. If y'all, if all of you wouldn't mind coming up and at some point at least introduce yourselves. And if you're a student, what school you are a student at. And if you're not a student, what do you do?
Yes, sir. We're going to let the team introduce themselves.
All right.
On behalf of AgriLife Extension, I am the county agent. We are here with the 4-H to present the 4-H proclamation. Our intern Caitlin Gieske has the proclamation, which we'll hand out for y'all to sign. We've got a surprise for y'all. We've got two of them for y'all to sign because we're going to put one up in our office and let y'all keep one as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to let them go down and we've got three outstanding 4-Hers here to represent for the county. They're going to give a little brief speech on what they do and how 4-H has impacted them. And then we've got a couple of, if Ms. Ann would like to say anything, she's one of our outstanding club managers that kind of helps me run the show. Ms. Carla's here with us as well. She's kind of been rankling with me. She eating my balls right now.
Okay.
We're going to let them go through and give their talk.
Sounds great. Thanks.
I'm going to get out of the way.
Good morning. My name is Pierre Lee. I am 17 and a senior at Napsota High School. I am the club council delegate and the county secretary for council. I have been in 4-H for three years and it has improved me in many ways. I was starting out as a bachelor girl, very shy, scared to ask questions from teachers. But now that I'm in 4-H, you have to learn to be more social with people because you're not going to get anywhere with being shy. You have to ask questions. You have to talk to people. You have to get networks. So I've been to county food show, district food show. I've participated in the Grimes County Fair. I did preserves, horticulture, and this year I'm planning to do photography and art added to my horticulture and food nutrition projects. And I would like to thank these people for helping me on my journey from 4-H and thank you for letting us come here and speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre.
Good morning.
Good morning, Charlie.
I am 17 years old and I am a junior and I'm at high school. And I do cheerleading and I play sports.
And your name is?
Charlie Williams.
Okay.
Brenda, well, Brenda Williams, well, daughter.
Oh, you're Brenda Williams' daughter? I am so sorry. I say that, is she in here? I say it with a smile on my face. Oh, she is? No, she isn't. All right. Please continue.
Someone once told me to come to 4-H and I'll have a great experience. And I told myself, I was like, no, because like I don't like to be shy around other people and like speak to other people that I don't know. And then the reason why that I came to 4-H is because I needed people skills and to be able to present myself to others. And being in 4-H has impacted my life in such an amazing way. I have gotten to travel to Washington, D.C. and I was able to give speeches up there. Being in 4-H has given me the opportunities to go to camps and be a leader to others. And I'm thankful to God for the blessings that he has gave me and for blessing me with a great leader, Miss Ann, and being a part of 4-H.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's what your momma said.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kirstie Bissa. Most of y'all might know me. I'm from my grandmother. I'm her granddaughter, Joelle Lambakis, obviously. Sorry. I'm not used to this. I don't usually wake up this early in the morning. I am a senior at Anderson Shiro High School, right down the road. So this is my last year being in 4-H. I am a student. Attending school from 7:50 to 3:30 Monday through Friday has been a normal part of my life since the age of six. However, now my eight, my years of general school are coming close to an end. With good times and some pretty rough times, it's been a crazy and very inspiring adventure. I have one special program to thank for this and for teaching me to become the person that I am to this day. 4-H has been with me from my beginning years of learning, starting in my P.E. years of kindergarten. My parents enrolled me in 4-H. At first it was exciting because I was young and everything seemed fun and exciting. And I learned how to do little things like sew and cook food and learn the nutritional value of it. But as we know, time goes on and we grow. Our lives change and the understanding of life becomes more clear. I hit a phase in my life where I sadly became a little lazy and a little irresponsible. I was lost in the start, but I didn't want to do everything. 4-H pushed me through all that and brought me back to the light. I became far more dedicated to my activities, working hard to raise my rabbits and winning showmanship became a pretty big highlight for me, to even becoming your Grimes County Fair Queen. I soon started having more leadership roles as well. A big part of my plans for my future is to actually be a business manager. Gaining these leadership skills has taught me that you may not always be recognized for the work that you do, but doing good is what matters to yourself. Soon my story is going to start. People will come and go from it and will help me along the way, but now it is up to me. I'm scared, but I have high faith. All because of 4-H, the roles and the skills I have learned have pretty much come from this amazing program. I feel as if I have a great head start and a foot went through the door already and on the right path. All because of 4-H, the impact it's given me and it's most definitely going to lead me down to a great and successful life.
Thanks for joining us this weekend. If bubba can cook. You were out there only.
I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it.
Well, of course.
Great job.
All right. So as you can see through a few of our 4-Hers here, what 4-H can offer to the kids in this county, everything from livestock to charm and sewing to shooting sports, 4-H will cover everything, life lessons, a lot of life lessons to be learned through 4-H. So at this time, Ms. Ann, would you like to say anything?
No.
I'd like to put a finger on this.
A woman, a few words.
Ms. Carla, you want to say it? Okay. At this time, we'd like to present both proclamations for y'all to say. It's the same thing. Like I said earlier, we just are going to keep a copy for us and let y'all keep a copy as well. And if y'all will sign this and everything, then we'll give y'all one more surprise. We'll have some cupcakes.
Awesome. Before we sign them, would you or have someone from your team read those proclamations for us?
Yes, who would like to? Through 4-H allows you to be able to do that.
That's right.
Whereas, the Grimes County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 111 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the lone scorer state. And whereas, this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas, it's more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to 19, hell from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas, the program undoubtedly cannot have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of this more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas, throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore be it resolved that the Grimes County Commissioners' Court hereby designates October 7 through 13, 2018, as National 4-H Week in Texas and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
Thank you.
Judge, with that being said, I move that we approve the proclamation to designate October 7 through the 13th of 2018 as National 4-H Week and authorize you as signatory, but it does have places for each of us to sign. So.
Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Walker.
And we also have another one for y'all, so we'll just put the date right there.
Surprise, surprise.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number five by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? We're glad to sign these proclamations. Mary, would you maybe, do you have your camera? Would you take my phone? And if you folks don't mind coming in front, once we get these signed, we'll get a group picture of all y'all, all of you. There is a camera right there. Oh, y'all.
I didn't say I was going to say, tell me where you're going to go. I'm going to Atlanta, Georgia for 4-H conference.
When are you leaving?
November 2.
Okay, because the storm's coming in this weekend. We didn't want you to go this weekend. That's awesome. Good for you.
Thank you.
Alan, which one are you taking?
Job with.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, and we're going to move to agenda item number six. It is present certificate of completion for Commissioner David Dobianski for participating in the Commissioners' Court Leadership Academy Class Number Seven, Session Number Four.
Again, it's me, Alan Homan, County Extension Agent. I would like to let my intern, Ms. Caitlin Gieske, she's with me working this fall. She's an aspiring county agent. We're going to let her present the certificate to Ms. Dobianski.
So on behalf of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, we would like to give you this certificate of participation.
Thank you so much. All right.
I would like to comment on this conference that I went to. Not only does Texas AgriLife teach young people, they also teach us. There's a lot of programs for Commissioners and judges. And this program that I went through for the past two years is one of the best leadership training sessions that I've ever had in my life, and I've had a lot of them because I was in education for 30 years. But this is a tremendous opportunity for any Commissioner or judge in the state of Texas, and I encourage anyone that gets the opportunity to do that, please take the opportunity. Tremendous amount of knowledge and connections that you get with other judges, legislators. We took a trip to Washington, D.C. to meet with legislatures in the Capitol and visited, even visited in other states. Went to New Hampshire to look at their government out there, and it's totally different from what we have in Texas. Get a lot of ideas and networking by going through this program.
Thank you. We will now get back to agenda order, go to consent agenda items number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills, consent agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. We've had an opportunity to review those. Commissioners, are there any questions for the auditor or the treasurer?
I don't have any. If there are no further questions, then I would like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, three and four.
Second. There's a motion before the court to approve consent agenda item number three and number four by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? We now proceed to agenda item number seven, Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Todd Green. Consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Grimes County and Montgomery County Auto Theft Task Force and authorize the county judge as signatory, C attachment number seven.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is our annual renewal for the interlocal agreement for our participation in the Montgomery County Auto Theft Task Force. We've been part of this auto theft task force for approximately 19 years. We've had a good working relationship with them and this program. It's a grant-funded program. The county does provide $10,000 for the program itself. And interlocal agreement, I've reviewed it. Everything's the same except for some of the numbers have changed based on the grant and equipment discretionary funds.
I did have a question on page three under article six, and I just highlighted, and as you say, I was of the opinion this is same as what we've worked under the past with both Montgomery County and Grimes County acknowledge and agree that all property seized by the participants in the task force performing, et cetera, it belongs to Montgomery County. Do we not ever get a little something out of the deal?
Yes.
Okay.
We have actually received several trailers throughout the years, but the vast majority of it is they do pay overwhelmingly in-kind match to this grant.
Right.
So when they're on an assignment and it's all coordinated together, if something is seized, it goes back to them. Obviously, a lot of the stuff that we give usually goes back to the owners, insurance companies, before it even gets to us. But I know we receive some trailers throughout the years, also, I think the trailer is just being used for the voters registration.
Right.
Our crime scene trailer is coming in, some of our trailers that have been used in the past for diversity improvements coming in. We received a large travel trailer that we're going to try to use as a command center. We actually received that through the insurance agency, but it all contributed through the task force and the beginning.
Very good.
So they do work with us on some things and obviously that's just on cases where our investigator is working in conjunction with the task force. So if the sheriff's office themselves are working a case that's not directly related, pulling in their resources, then we actually get to keep those items if we do.
And I'll ask the auditors because under article nine, it does say that Montgomery County shall have the right to perform and cause to perform audit of the books and records of Grimes County pertaining to Grimes County performance under the agreement. Are you folks okay with that?
Like never asked to audit anything.
But it is, I mean.
Sure, when?
Oh, I understand that. It's just sometimes we get territorial and I wanted to make sure it's okay to cross the fence.
I do have a question. $10,000, is that in your budget or do we need to put that in?
No, it's already budgeted. It's not, I guess it is directly in our budget. Do we all have a second one? It is already budgeted.
And you're good with it?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Todd? Chief?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement between Grimes County and Montgomery County Auto Theft Task Force. Looks like he's got a finisher for all of us.
A second.
Ladies first?
Sure.
Okay. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seven by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? Chief, thanks.
Thank you.
Got to number eight. That is consider and approve the revised job description for the crime victims coordinator, C attachment eight. Commissioners, if y'all will turn to that, I'll share briefly the changes that were made to that. If you will look at the job description, go to where you see the bullet points. The last bullet point was added and it says responsible for coordinating financial support for paupers as mandated in the government code and make provisions for services to those to be buried by the county, i.e. working with funeral home directors and anatomical companies, nursing homes, hospice care, negotiate between the county and funeral directors for final compensation. So that bullet point was added to the job description. And then if you go up to the second bullet point, we did some consolidating of lines where it now just says work with district and county courts, district and county attorneys slash forward. where it now just says, "Work with District and County Courts, District and County Attorneys/Staff, Law Enforcement Juvenile Department, and the Attorney General's Office." So where those were individual lines, we were able to reduce some space and collectively put those together. This has been reviewed by our HR Director Lucy Pope and also by our Crimes Victim Coordinator, Ms. Brenda Williams, and it meets with everybody's approval. But because this is a part of the county's records, we wanted to bring it before the court to make sure that, Commissioners, you were agreeable with those changes. If there are no questions or concerns, I make a motion that we approve the revised job description for the crimes victim coordinator as attached to Number Eight.
That's second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight. First by Joe Fowles, second by Commissioner Walker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nine. Roden Bridge Engineer Harry Walker, consider and take action to award the contract moving, bridge construction, labor service contract, fuel, culverts, and tree trimming services. Mr. Walker?
Good morning, everyone.
You'll stand by because you're gonna be nine, ten, eleven, and Roden Bridge report. All right, sir.
I would suggest we walk through these one at a time.
Please.
I passed out the bid tabulations earlier this morning. Contract mowing. We received three bids. Triple B egg services, Jimmy Shimshack and Wayne Cool LLC. Wayne Cool was the low bidder on all three locations. The locations in different areas that we packaged up for mowing. They came in with a price of four thousand fifty-seven dollars for location A. Jimmy Shimshack did not bid location A, and triple B egg was at sixty-two hundred dollars. On location C, I'll come back to B, but on location C, Wayne Cool was at fifty-two fifty-two versus seventy-five hundred for triple B egg. And again, Jimmy Shimshack did not bid that one. So Cool was low on both of those. On location B, there was an addendum that was issued on this project. Mr. Cool acquired the bid information off our website. The addendum was posted on the website, but our website does not capture the information. Who is downloading information? He was not aware of that addendum, so it was not included in his bid. His original bid for location B was six thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, compared to twelve thousand seven forty-five for Jimmy Shimshack. When I talked to Mr. Cool, I asked him about the addendum, and he said he had not seen it. It was not included in his bid. We discussed it. His per mile rate for the other mowing services is ninety-eight dollars a mile. Factoring in the mileage for the two roads included in the addendum would add another fourteen hundred and twenty-one dollars per cycle to his bid for a total of eight thousand one hundred and forty-three. I would suggest or request that y'all waive the irregularity in the bidding, accept Wayne Cool as the low bidder on all three locations, and include the addition of the roads included on the addendum for the additional fourteen hundred and twenty-one dollars per cycle. Cool, I'd leave you there.
Yeah, I'm here. And I'm good with all that.
If there are any questions, specific questions that I can't answer, he'll be glad to help.
Can you just briefly tell us where, or at least tell me where Location A, B, and C is?
I get confused. We do the Johnson Ranch area in sort of southwest of Iola. We do the Whitehall area, and we do sort of the northeast of Water Noddy County. Those are the three areas. And don't ask me which one is which.
Okay. Fair enough.
A is the north, and B is the south.
Okay.
Because they moved...
Yeah, B is the south because the roads in the addendum were three oh two and three oh four.
Yeah.
Oh, so how many cycles?
Two cycles. And then we have a, the bid also includes an hourly rate. If we have extra mowing we request, or in the past, on occasion, the county has requested the contractor perform an extra cycle at the same rate per cycle as the others. But typically, we only do two cycles. Also talked to Mr. Cool, and he has moved, done this type of runaway mowing for the city of Huntsville and also with Walker County, I believe.
Was it bid as a per mile bid?
It's not a per mile bid.
But it gives it... And it gives total mileage of that for the bid?
Right. In the bid document, it lists the roads and the mileage. So you can back out the per mile rate. And that's what we use to extend the two additional roads.
And Mr. Walker, you indicated to me that making the modification would not cause his bid to exceed the next lowest fitters.
It does not. He is still low by a substantial margin.
One last question for me. Has Mr. Cool ever had a contract like this with Grimes County before?
I believe he's ever had with Grimes County.
You live in Grimes County?
Uh, no, I live in Huntsville.
Ever thought about moving?
I grew up just across the county line in West San Antonio. My kids don't go to school in the river.
Doesn't hurt to ask. All right. If there are no other questions, is there a motion for Agenda Item Number Nine?
Well, we've got multiple contracts, right?
You want to do them one at a time?
You might want to do them one at a time.
Yeah.
Just for simplicity.
Right.
I move that we approve the mowing contract to Wayne Cool LLC and designate the county judge as signatory.
Do we need to make the modification?
You could...
With the modifications.
Modification.
Yes. With the modifications that were addressed by Mr. Walker.
Second. There's a motion before the court on a part of Agenda Item Number Nine, and that would be the contract for mowing by, it's first by Commissioner Dobianski, second by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor of that portion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bridge construction labor services contract, sir?
Bridge construction labor is a little simpler. We only received one bid on this package. That was from Naanon Bridge, had a flat hourly rate of two hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour. They have performed bridge construction services on this basis for us in the past, and I would recommend that we award the contract to them at this amount. This is the same amount that they bid last year. They were not successful last year, but their price hasn't gone up.
Do you know how many hours this might be?
It's an open-ended. This is intended for emergency-type situations where we need to have somebody come in and work on a bridge without having the time to go through a bidding process. So we have a way, we have a contract in place. We can pay them to do the work. We do, last year, last year we did two fifteen on an emergency basis. Occasionally, things come up where you just, you can't wait. And this gives us a mechanism to refund to those needs where beyond the capabilities the county crew. We just, we negotiate out an agreed amount of hours for the work. As a starting point for that kind of an operation.
Okay.
We use it in some of the flooding situations where we had to repair bridges and bid laws and so forth.
Okay. Is there any further questions or discussion on bridge construction labor services contract?
I don't have any. I'd like to make the motion we award the contract for bridge construction to Neyland Bridge Construction at an hourly rate of two thirty-five.
Second. In regards to Agenda Item Number Nine, the bridge construction labor service contract, there's a motion by Commissioner Walker. There's a second by Commissioner Cox. All in favor of that portion of the Agenda Item Number Nine, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The motion carries. Mr. Walker, then the next portion, is it fuel, culverts, and tree trimming?
The next contract is fuel.
Fuel, okay.
On the fuel contract, which is to provide the gas and diesel used by both Roden Bridge and the Sheriff's Department, Colcorse Petroleum was the only bidder. They have had this contract in the past. The bid tabulations show you the per gallon amounts they bid this year. And I put a column out to the side to show you the differences from last year's contract. You can see the fuel costs have gone up across the board. Anyone, anywhere from forty-three cents a gallon for regular gasoline to fifty-one cents a gallon for the diesels. However, that's not a surprise. We knew fuel prices were going up, and hopefully, everybody's accounted for in their budget.
I move to award the fuel contract to Colcorse Petroleum as presented.
I second the motion.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine, the fuel contract portion. There's a first by Commissioner Mallett, second by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We now move to this culvert's and tree trimming one, or is it just culvert's?
Just culvert's.
All right. It didn't seem like a good mix, but okay. So the culvert's portion of Agenda Item Number Nine, Mr. Walker?
On the culvert's bid, I'm gonna ask you to table the award until a future date. I do not have the bid tabulations for that ready. These are complicated due to the volume of different prices we receive. We did receive three bids, but we're not ready to present them yet this morning.
Okay. In the event we don't get a contract decided fairly quickly, do you have culvert's available for work to be done? Or are you able to extend the current contract until we get a new one?
We have some materials on hand, and all of our contracts also include the option for one-year extension.
Over storms brewing in the Gulf and everywhere else, I just want to be prepared.
I understand.
So we'll take no action on the culvert's portion based on Mr. Walker's recommendation? That would leave one more for Agenda Item Number Nine. That would be tree trimming services?
On our tree trimming services, we received three bids. Rock Construction had an hourly charge of two hundred and fifteen dollars. Rufus Tree Inc. had an hourly charge of one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And Flores Tree Service came in at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour. Flores has had our contract the last several years, and they've done a good job. I would recommend that we award this contract to them.
Is there a motion on behalf of the tree trimming contract?
I make the motion that we award the tree trimming contract to Flores Tree Service LLC.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine, the last item. Tree trimming services by Commissioner Walker. Seconded by Commissioner Cox. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. We all able to follow the notes on all of them? Okay. All right. Can we move to Agenda Item Number Ten then? Consider and take action to extend the contract hauling, stonem location, and the limestone flexible base material. Item two four seven, type A, grade five.
These are related items for annual contracts. As the judge alluded to earlier, we do have the ability to extend contracts for up to a year's time when the situation warrants. In this case, the contract hauling, the contract for contract hauling to the stoning yard, we are recommending be extended for an additional year. MAT Trucking has been handling that. They've done a very good job. We would like to extend their contract at the same unit prices, same mileage rates that they've had in this previous year, which looked like a pretty good deal given what you saw just on the fuel prices. But they are willing to hold their prices for an additional year. We are in the process of rebidding the contract for the Iola yard. That was what we talked about last time, that we had some irregularities in the bidding. We had to rebid it. That contract, we are going to rebid, but the one to service the stonewall, we're asking for you to extend it.
And it's MAT Trucking?
MAT. Takes you to MAT Transportation, MAT Transportation. And then the companion item, the contract for limestone flex-based material. Currently, Frost Stone has that contract. We have been very happy with the material they're providing, and we're asking you to also extend that contract for an additional year at the same prices as last year.
I move to approve the, I mean to extend the contract hauling to the stone location to MAT Transportation and the limestone flex-based material. Item two four seven, type A, grade five to Frost Stone.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Ten by Commissioner Mallett. Seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eleven. Request Authorization to Issue Request for Qualifications for Engineering Services Related to the Bridge Design Activities for CR 201 and CR 202 Under the 2015 General Land, GLO, General Land Office Disaster Recovery Grant, and appoint committee members to review submitted.
This item is related to the GLO grant we received recently. Under the grant terms and conditions, any professional services that are contracted must go through a competitive qualification selection. In this case, we're looking to have bridge design firms submit qualifications for the design of the bridges on CR 1 and CR 2, and are asking for permission to go out for those bids. Grant Works will assist us in the preparation of those qualifications packages. Typically, well, the preliminary schedule for this, we've established, we would bring the bid packages back in early October. And then myself and two committee members from council would be asked to review those packages and make recommendations to co-counsel for the award. So in addition to the authorization to go out and solicit these qualifications packages, I'm asking that you appoint two council members to assist in the review process.
Commissioner Court, members. You said council.
Done that for you. Hard change. Hard change.
Since that's in my position, I gladly serve on that committee.
Okay, Commissioner Dobianski said, since it's in his precinct, he would gladly serve on that. Is there a, I'll, I'll do it as an engineer. Alright, and as an engineer? If that meets with the approval of Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Cox?
That sounds good to me.
So there, let's see. I guess. We need a motion, we need a motion on that? So, since you volunteered, you wanna make a motion?
Yes.
You could do one motion for both if you wanted to. That's the way the agenda is set.
Okay.
I move that we authorize it to issue requests for qualifications for engineering services related to bridge design activities for County Roads two-oh-one and two-oh-two under the two thousand and fifteen GLO Disaster Recovery Grant. And the committee members will include Mr. Walker, Commissioner Mallett, and myself to review the submittals.
I'll second the motion. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eleven by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Rock and city council members somewhere into helping out, they're welcome.
Rock and Bridge Report.
The paving projects have been disrupted here over the last two weeks because of weather patterns. Last week, we made a decision to not pave based on the forecast. Turned out it would've been good weather to pave. But we didn't wanna risk either wasting the material or having problems with the application. This week, it has just been too wet to pave, so we've delayed those operations. We are expecting, looking at the forecast, to go go back to work on our paving next week and the following week. If that holds true, we are projecting to have about nine and a half miles of roads paved. We had originally planned on trying to get twelve piles this year. But we will end the beginning of the next fiscal year. We have a couple other areas that are being prepared, base works being done. We intend to go ahead and complete those, but it will not be done prior to the end of the fiscal year, so going in October. It, it would've been a close call even if the weather had cooperated a little bit. We've got a little bit of a late start this year. But we have tried to, tried to get as much done as we could given the conditions. Now elsewhere, we did a complete bridge deck replacement on the County Road one-seventy-nine Bridge up in the north end of county. This was a bridge that Tech dot had inspected recently and recommended that the deck needed to be replaced. So we went ahead and took advantage of the weather conditions that were dry at that time to go ahead and do that work. Got that done and Tech dot will come out and re-inspect that bridge and we believe that likely changed load ratings on that bridge as a result of the work we've done. Elsewhere, we have two contractors working right now. Palisota Construction is expecting to complete the last concrete pour on the four-oh-four structure this afternoon. If the rain holds off. And then once that work, once four-oh-four is done, then they'll be moving up to one-forty-one and complete that structure. And then Wakefield Bridge is continuing their work on the one-thirty-two bridge. That should be complete here in a few weeks, but they've had some delays in getting their steel beams in, so that's slowed their progress down a little bit. And then beyond that, we have been working both on the twenty-fifteen grant, getting everything lined out for that project. And then also working with Grant Works on the twenty-sixteen grant application, some little main activity there. We've done cost estimates for the projects. And we're kind of gathering household surveys to establish eligibility for the different areas. We have had some volunteers that have put in a lot of time and effort on that. And I can mention particularly Ever Johnson in the Blackberry Community has taken a very active role in that and had brought in a lot of the household surveys for us and organized several meetings to try and get that information together. So we appreciate her assistance. Grant Works and some of the staff, Dave Lilly, have been out also and done surveys and trying to get that wrapped up. That application is due to be turned in by the end of the month, so scrambling to get everything finished.
Did, because this is a hazard mitigation, a part of that hazardous flood mitigation?
Yes, this.
The, the, the court, we had some discussion, Mr. Lilly and I had, and then when we were talking with Brad Stockard on their flood plan review with Army Corps of Engineers. Because they were asking for help financially if possible, and the question I asked, would GLO Hazard Mitigation Grant allow us money to contribute to them to aid in that Army Corps of Engineers study? Do you all know any of the facts of would this Hazard Mitigation Grant program allow us to get grant money to assist the Corps of Engineers on that study?
There are grant programs specifically tailored to those, what they call bench planning exercises. I do not know that this particular program would cover those kind of activities. We can find out, but that they've got such a variety of different programs that are out there, I hesitate to say that definitely this one could or couldn't qualify. We have not asked for that in this application. And it may be a little bit late to get it in since it is due by the end of the month. But there are other possibilities out there that might be helpful with that.
I, I, I don't wanna quote exactly, but I believe the price tag that Navasota was having to pay the Corps of Engineers, like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand? Commissioner Cox, were you in that meeting with me?
I've had a discussion with the city.
I think it was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is what they were having to pay the Corps of Engineers and the city manager was saying, if you can help contribute anything, it would be helpful. And I didn't, you know, we didn't do any outright budget numbers for that, 'cause we didn't have any outright budget numbers for that, but if some of these grants, if there's a way to apply on any of these grants or get some funding in that fashion to help support Navasota, because at the end of the day, what they do is gonna affect us. And as Commissioner Walker's pointed out to me, there's some LMI households down there that have a tendency to get flooded on a regular basis. They're effectively end up on a little bit of an island.
I, I'd be glad to look into it, see what possibilities are. I'm, I'm not quite sure how that would work if we were getting a grant from the federal government to turn around and pay the federal government to do the flood study.
To me, it's not like a great idea.
What did you call the grant earlier you spoke about?
Hazard mitigation.
Had a mitigation.
Not that one.
Pre-disaster planning.
You called it a?
GLO.
GLO.
No.
Nope.
You said there are some other grants you call it a?
The, well, the Hazard Mitigation Planning is for pre-disaster exercises.
But you say a vent or something, you said like that.
Oh, that's funny.
Advanced planning.
And that's kinda what this would be, I think.
We, we can look into it and there certainly may be some possibilities. I just can't specifically say this could work and that wouldn't.
I don't wanna hold you up, but I do, if you be conscious of that down the road, that'd be great. Thank you.
Oh, just to finish up the report, the drainage crew, the great oil crew has been assisting with the roadway preparation for the chip ceiling projects. They've been working over Smithway, Magnolia, down in that Smith Creek area. Getting those red roads ready for when the paving crews are ready to work on them. We have not been using side ditching machine for a while now because of dry conditions. Now that it gets rain again, we'll probably put him back, back on the machine and go back to the small ditching operations as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. We'll go to agenda item number twelve. Commissioner Precinct forecourt Cox discussing, considering, take action to implement policy regarding the process by which changes are made to the Grimes County Salary Structure Grade Levels and Grade Definitions, the attachment number twelve. Commissioner Cox?
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, gotcha. Oh. So, the process by which things change on our current salary structure and grade definitions was has determined been used somewhat of a growing pain and we needed a little better understanding at least how that should probably operate. So between Ms. Pope and myself, we went down that road to see if maybe there might be something we can contribute to make it a little better. And in that process, we looked at other policy count, other counties' policies to determine, you know, where we might fall into some of those that use similar structures. I did some online research and looked at policies that could be viewed online. I know Ms. Pope has talked with TAC and communicated that information to me. And I had discussions with some elected officials and some department heads and some employees. So in this process between Ms. Pope and I, we came up with several different options and we all, it, it seemed like every time we'd come up with one, some other scenario would come up and we'd have to kind of adjust it. So one of the things that I noticed in this process were a few patterns that needed to be taken into consideration with changing or at least implementing some type of policy. And one of those is the team concept seemed to be a little bit problematic. At the end of the day, the team, the team was unable to make those administrative decisions. They can make a recommendation, but the person that was making the request or suggestion could do whatever they wanted to do at the end of that. And sometimes even things that were presented to the team never made it to the Commissioners' Court. And there were some conflicting roles on the team wherein that it was difficult for employees to analyze another department's operation while at the same time make judgment calls related to the elected officials' management. And then it became a little bit problematic to, to find employees or team members in the process. Another observation that I made was that initially the job descriptions that were submitted to the original committee may have been a little bit inaccurate or even incomplete, which kind of resulted in some misclassification of salary or scale or both. And the, the initial team did what they did based on the information that they were provided. Well, as we've seen, some of that information has changed. We needed to add to it as this thing has grown to get a better understanding. And then I think it's been noticed and even commented on that most of the requests were at the end of the day made in an attempt to get more money for the particular position. I don't, I don't recall, and Ms. Pope, maybe you can clarify or maybe help me, but I don't recall a, a single request to change a grade level that, that didn't come with a salary change. And I don't ever recall any request for downward movement. So some of the things that are the results from some of these researches and, and observations is that the team approach may not be the most effective or efficient way of addressing personnel issues. And it is my belief, and I think talking to department heads and elected officials and even employees, that it is the elected officials and the department heads responsibility, responsibility for staffing and the management of their department. I don't necessarily know that as the Commissioner's Court, we need to get deep into determining who and what and how things are done in individual departments. Because if it's a success or a failure, it basically comes back to the Commissioners' Court. And in reality, it's probably, it needs to be the elected official that was elected to run that department, not necessarily the, the Commissioners' Court. And then ultimately, based on the policies and observations and talking to people and TAC and at the end of the day, the way that it's set up right now, all of those decisions come back to Commissioners' Court. We, we're having to make those decisions. And somebody made the comment to me, and it was actually in regard to the team concept, is don't pass the ball to the sidelines. So if we're gonna be a part of this, then we need to be a part of it. We need to be the team. If we're gonna be that involved in that process, then I believe that it rests with us to make those decisions. And I neglected to read what the, the policy was. Would you like for me to do that?
I would, please.
Okay. So six point one, changes to the salary structure and grade definitions. County positions are designated in individual grade levels and compensated based on similar duties, levels of skill and responsibilities outlined in the job descriptions described in the Grimes County Salary and Structure Grade Definitions. Elected officials and department heads are responsible for ensuring the job descriptions assigned to positions correctly reflects the duties and responsibilities being performed in each, each position. Any elected official or department head subordinate to the Commissioners' Court may request a change to a job description, grade level, or salary. The elected official or department head's request will be submitted to the Human Resources Department and placed on a Commissioners' Court agenda for consideration in February or May. At any time, the Commissioners' Court may review, adjust any job description, grade, or salary scale according to the needs of the county. So it's a pretty simplistic policy. I'm not saying that it's perfect. I'm just saying that based on the things that we were able to ascertain from the research and the conversations that we had, that that just seemed like everything pointed right back with the current way that it's set up to the Commissioners' Court making those decisions.
What does the asterisk indicate at the end of the first sentence in the first paragraph?
That is the grade definition, salary structure and grade definition are included in the policy and pursuit plan like these.
And then in the third paragraph, why did you select February or May?
I know we've had a conversation, Judge, and I think that was the February and the May dates were considered because that is kind of starting the budgeting process, or at least should be. Elected officials and department heads should start thinking or should be thinking about what their next year's budget is gonna be. And then definitely in May, that would give them the opportunity if they wanted to have another consideration for that, that we could consider that and, and look at the budget to determine, you know, going forward where, where that might be.
So that, sure that may be read between February and May, or instead of February or May, or something a little bit more, more within a timeframe?
Well.
For some little.
It, it could, yes. That's at the, that's at the pleasure of the court, obviously, but.
When Commissioner Cox and I talked about, you know, particular times, it was thought that they'd get all their homework done and be prepared if they're coming by February. But then if necessary, or somebody was asleep at the wheel as we start the budget process, then you have another shot at it at May. But I, I guess I would be a little bit opposed to having it February through May, 'cause that's gonna be February, March, April. That's four months of rolling through this process. So, of course, I don't mind calling Commissioners' workshops. It's just sometimes I get a little grief from Commissioners about all of the workshops, so.
So I, I don't mind a workshop either. And one of the considerations. And one of the considerations for February or May is that it's off, offering two opportunities, but whenever, if we're going to stay consistent with the evaluation process, then I think that that evaluation process should be consistent with the request. And we do those once a year. I mean, you can do it anytime you want, but generally speaking, they're done once a year. And that's not just in our county. That's generally accepted practice across the, the spectrum of employment, but...
And what I would accept, what I would suggest, and, and I think Commissioner Cox has pretty well covered it, but unless there's a departmental change or reorganization, or we get technology that might increase or decrease an individual's skill set, we're getting a pretty good foundation of job descriptions and our salary grades that we can work with. So, I, I know this year has been somewhat extraordinary, and I use the word immature, and I'm sorry I use that, but, you know, we've been able to improve, I think, with every adjustment that's been made. Just a comment.
Ms. Pope, do you have anything to add?
I'd like to add that I, I reviewed the suggestions made, and I think it's a good start. Personally, I still see us having some workshops to delve into it a little bit more. And I think some of the things that I've seen from other counties and talked with TAC about, there are some things still that need to have a little bit more detail, so it's clear to our department heads and our elected official, the procedures for doing certain types of things such as your hiring procedures, your promotions, your transfers, the preparation, maintenance, and appeals to the salary grade classification, and reclassification of a pre-grade, demotions, you know, just your progression. Sometimes people progress through the salary range from one grade to the next. And just to, so it's really clear, when I talk about those kind of things, we talk about a lot of times what a department head may be able to do with excess funds that you have in your salary line, and how, how you can maybe, you fill a position up to 100% of the salary range, but how do you, you know, and how not to go over that 100%. It's just a lot of things to me that need a little bit more clarity than what we're seeing in order to encourage our department heads and our elected officials to have buy-in to the policy and the grade structure. I think there's still going to be a lot of questions on how do we do this, or how do we do that? And at some point beyond this budget cycle, before we get to February or May of next year, that we clarify, we'll leave it with more detail on how they make those changes. You know, we know that elected officials don't always have to comply with these guidelines, but we want to encourage them to comply with them. And the things that they do are set, are limited by what's within their official budget. And so, we want to make sure that they're able to work within their budget on, on some of their promotions, on their transfers. You know, we do a lot of transfers when positions are open or, you know, and we need to address some things, you know, just, just take a little time and pull in some more examples of what other counties or what TAC has to say about this or that, and improve upon the salary structure, I mean, the policy of it. Because this policy is, 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 should be clear enough to where anybody can go to it and understand, how do I do this step by step if we're going to create a policy? So, I did talk to Commissioner Cox about my feelings about it, you know, and, and he, he felt like, you know, at some point, we probably should probably sit down a little bit more and delve into it.
Am I okay with that? Sure.
So, just to address what Commissioner Walker said, it's certainly something that is worthy of a workshop, but the general intent of this, or my idea behind this, is that this, this gives the department heads and elected officials the authority that they have. I mean, that's whether or not they promote, demo, hire, fire. I mean, in my mind, that's their decision. It's 100% their decision. We come in, well, it, it should be 100% their decision. We come in from the budgetary standpoint. Can they afford to do, or can the county afford to do what they want to do? But I agree with you. Some workshops in the future would probably clear up some of those matters.
I would make a motion that, based on what Commissioner Cox has submitted for agenda item number 12, that we accept his recommendation as is, and also with the understanding that we'll have further workshops to address what Commissioner Walker has mentioned in the area of promotions, demotions, hiring, firing, et cetera, just personnel matters in general in that respect. But my motion would be to accept what Commissioner Cox has presented for changes to salary structure and grade definitions, employee personnel policy 6.1.
Second.
There's a mission, uh, there's a, there is a motion before the Court on agenda item number 12 by, by Joe Fount, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose. Commissioner Cox, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I guess, Ms. Pope, you can go. Agenda item number 13, County Judge Joe Fount, review balance of holiday schedule for 2018. Review and approve proposed 2019 holiday schedule while reallocating eight hours available for Texas Independence Day, which falls on Saturday, 2019. See attachment 13. We have the, these following approved holidays for 2018. And those are what everybody has planned around and has their vacations established for, et cetera. I would recommend that there be no changes to the 2018 holiday schedule as planned, but I would ask you to flip to the sec, or the back page of the proposed Grimes County 2019 holiday schedule, and that's based on 120 hours of approved holiday time, which is 15 holidays. I guess the extraordinary issue that we will deal with in calendar year 2019 is that our Texas Independence Day... Where am I looking at?
Hit the box.
Well, we have, the, the Texas Independence Day is scheduled for...
It's not on this schedule.
It's not on...
No, I just left it off because it's on a Saturday.
Okay.
Watch a second, I think.
So, the option would be, we could take the Friday off before, or since the day does fall on the calendar Saturday, we can take that day as a floater holiday, I would believe. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Pope, as we go through this. But looking way ahead to next year's Christmas schedule, you have Tuesday, which is Christmas Eve, Tuesday, the 24th of December, which is a designated holiday, Wednesday, the 25th, which is a designated holiday. Didn't know if we would want to consider taking the day before or the day after the Christmas holidays, is that Texas Independence Day? We have some options. And I don't think, looking into the Texas Code, Mr. Foltz, that we're not like a, a bank or a entity where you can't be closed three days together, but I don't know what hardship that might present to our citizens if we close the county Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday during the Christmas holidays. I'm not aware of any guidance we have in that area, but I don't want to, towards the end of the year, I wouldn't want to burden the citizens trying to take care of year-end business and not have county offices available and open to, to handle that.
It's not a probation, if that's what you're asking.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Senda mentioned that there was an issue with payroll, I believe, that week of Christmas, and so we would need to, in order to approve payroll, we would need to have Commissioners' Court at some time during the week of Christmas.
Are we talking about 2019?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Commissioners' Court's going to have to be here the 23rd to approve.
Well, that's one thing for Commissioners' Court. It's another thing for all the other employees.
Well, if they're going to be here, they got to be here today.
Well, that's very kind of you, Madam President.
I had that option also.
I don't believe we need to make a decis, I know we don't need to make a decision on this today, but I would like us to make a decision on it fairly soon as people start making their plans for 2019, and we know how the Court's going to operate. And there might be other options. We've put some options down in this red box at the bottom for you to consider. There might be other options that we haven't thought of that might be better or more appropriate. The issue comes up, Texas Independence Day, 2019, falls on a Saturday. We could take it the Friday before, which is what a lot of companies would typically do when a holiday falls in the weekend. Or we could take that day and say we could more effectively use it somewhere else in the holiday schedule. So, my suggestion on agenda item number 13, I don't know if I can get it down. Yeah, 13, is that we take no action today, but let Commissioners, now that you have it in front of you, review it, let's consider it, and then make a decision. We'll get it back on the agenda at our next regular meeting, Shereen. Yes, Ms. Walker?
Can I just say that on, if you do it the Friday before, that will be the last Friday of the month when all your procrastinators come into the office to register registration. So, you're going to put them, cut them off the day if you do it on the 28th, and that's what we're going to do.
Or do it on the Monday following.
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
Okay. If you were to take the Friday before the 2nd, which is going to be February 28th, that's the last day of the month, and it's the last Friday of the month.
Right.
Now, that's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday.
If Saturday's the 2nd. Saturday's the 2nd. Is Saturday or Sun, or Sunday is the 2nd?
Or Saturday.
Okay, well, then that'll be, if you do that first, it'll be Friday. So, that's, never mind. It's, it's still not real good, but it might work for that.
Okay, Commissioners, I still propose we take no action today. Review, you review it, chew on it, sleep on it, and then we'll have it as an agenda item to make a decision at our next regular meeting. If you'll put it on there, Shereen. Are y'all agreeable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Okay. Go to agenda item number 14, consider to take action to approve the ballot, Brazos Valley Area Agency on Aging.
Yes.
DVAA for FY 2018-19 vendor agreement for congregate and home-delivered meals and authorize the county judge's signature. See attachment 14. I must admit, I did not read that.
I did speak with Ms. Meese, who oversees this program.
Okay.
And she said back in May or June, we already approved the budget, was signed for this department. This is just the contract that sets out the dollar amount per meal. And at this time, the number varies per month. On the meals, you may deliver 640, her last report for August was 640 home meals delivered and 156 congregate meals. She said, she did, may have noticed some changes. I think that it increased just slightly, the meals did, which is on the second page.
Six dollars and 48 cents and six dollars and 84 cents.
Mm-hmm. She spoke to the fact that it's been very challenging with the meals this year. You had a lot of people getting on the meals and then dropping off the meals, and, but the good thing is, the meals are available for our citizens. The only other thing that she wasn't sure if she was noticing was maybe some documentation days. She thought that they had, had been changed on some of the documentation, but I didn't get a chance to speak with Jessie, and her computer wasn't acting correctly. Do you see any changes that you noted, County Attorney?
My staff has noted the, the changes to be the rates 2018. These are reimbursement rates. We provide the meals, and there are two types of meals. One's a congregate meal, one's a home-delivered meal. Reimbursement rate for congregate in 2018 was 651, and the new reimbursement is 648. So, going down three cents.
That's good.
The 2018 reimbursement rate for home-delivered was 662, and it's going up to 684.
That's probably...
So, it's my understanding those are the only changes to the agreement.
Okay, just for clarity for her, did the agreement under the terms of agreement, number three, did that change anything? I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, the number three of what page?
Uh, on the third page.
The third page. From the numeral two terms of agreement, item number three.
Submit billing with appropriate documentation as required by, et cetera, et cetera. Is that what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. Is that a fifth day on there?
Yeah, fifth day. It's the same as last year's agreement.
Okay.
That's the case, and do you want to make a motion, Commissioner?
Yes. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Brazos Valley Area Agency on Aging for FY 2018, 2019 vendor agreement for congregate and home-delivered meals and authorize the county judge's signature.
Second, second motion. There's a motion before the Court on agenda item number 14 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries, agenda item number 16, consider the proposed budget for FY 2018-19 and take actions to adopt the budget with a record vote pursuant to Local Government Code 111.008. Note, budget must be adopted before tax rate pursuant to Local Government Code 111.010.
Judge, if y'all do decide to adopt the budget today, I do need it to state in there with the changes discussed on Monday.
On Mondays.
And I thought, Judge, I'm not sure, did I hear you say that we were waiting to, on something else before the adoption, to clarify some things?
Just the calendar.
Just the calendar?
Yes, ma'am. To my understanding, and I met with Shannon from the District Tax Office yesterday to make sure that date-wise and order-wise we're in compliance, so...
Well, was it, did you have the conversation with the City of Navasota to clarify whether they were talking about this year's budget or next year?
Remind me.
What we spoke to Mr. Walker about earlier, about the City of Navasota requesting help with the...
Well, I haven't gotten a response from the city manager, so I didn't have the discussion, but it would have to come in either out of fund balance or through the grant process if we did a system.
Or is this portion, a part of the strategic plan also?
It could be. We do have some funds allocated there, not a lot, but, and providing that is in compliance with our strategic plan, or if we revisit that and modify that.
Well...
Fair questions?
Can you clue us in what y'all are talking about?
It was, it was, it was on the Army Corps of Engineers study, that $250,000, when city manager Brad Stafford invited me to a meeting and said, "And Judge, if the county can contribute to this any amount, we would be appreciative." And that's when I started talking about... And that's when I started talking about the idea of, since it's a mitigation plan that the Army Corps of Engineers is working on, and the GLO is offering grant money towards mitigation, can we get some of that federal money to pay the Army Corps of Engineers in, on our behalf? Because at the time, and still, we did not have any unallocated funds that we could budget or chose not to budget in that direction.
Also, we made changes the other day. Do we have the changes? Are the budget with the changes in it to approve it?
I don't have a copy of it in here. I can go get Jessie and see if she's... I mean, I know she's entered them because I checked over them after she entered them. And it was just the few changes that were discussed.
We knew the numbers. I believe we knew the numbers balanced within the funds that were available because then we had, I won't call them additional funds, but we were able then to allocate funds to the strategic plan and to...
On the department on these things.
Yes, in the 424.
I, personally, I feel a little uncomfortable approving something I haven't put my eyes on. You know, I know that we just met the other day, but it would be nice to see. So I don't know how you feel about that, but...
Well, we agreed on...
I mean, you could have typos, you could have anything, you know. And we made quite a few changes.
And if you're, if you're at the place where you want to be, you can finish the agenda at recess and have copies printed and pick up this meeting in a few minutes.
Say that again, please.
I'm just saying that if, if, if that's the position of the Commissioner and/or other commissioners, you don't have to reset it for another meeting. You could just recess in a second when you finish this agenda, have them printed, and pick back up after they're printed.
Okay.
I think it's important that we look at it, yes.
Then we will set that aside for the moment. And we'll go to Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Consider to take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the County Judge as Signatory. I would propose that we lift the burn ban.
Bet you what?
Lift the burn ban?
It's only had a half an inch of rain at my house the last week. Everybody else is getting rain all around, and I'm on the South End.
Okay, we could, with the designation that Ms. Waters may not burn.
I mean, I'm just saying. I mean, our area hasn't been getting the rain.
Uh, but, well, and I understand that, but, but the entire county has had some rain.
Right.
And the forecast today is some more rain. And as we're moving through this weekend, a lot more rain, four to eight inches potentially, so.
Well, let's hope we get some.
So it'd be my recommendation that we lift the ban. Any other?
I agree. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be burned, and it's, it's building.
All right, so I make a motion to Graham's County on Agenda Item Number Sixteen, that we lift the burn ban until further notice. I have a second by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So Mr. Lilly, if you'll take the signs down, if you'll advise Mr. Peeler to take the flag down and help advise the part of apartments, please.
Just send a message to y'all, too.
Thank you, sir. With that, are there any updates on Agenda Item Number Seventeen, the strategic plan, at this time? None? Okay. No change there. So we're going to go into recess for a few minutes. And I guess Ms. Nichols has already left. All right. So you might want to enjoy a cupcake during the recess. Court, back to order. We're now off of recess. We do have copies in front of us for the FY 2019. It says approved budget, that's the, the mission at hand. But if it's not approved, then we'll modify, adjust, and change as appropriate. So I'm gonna go back to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, and we are back online. Consider the proposed budget of FY 2018/19, and take action to adopt the budget with a record vote pursuant to Local Government Code 111.008. When we were working in the workshop, we had a total of thirty-four pages.
There, Judge, there are no page numbers on this one because when we file it, it'll have pages that had the acknowledgements, the official page, the tax. And so I'm waiting for it to be approved to scan it in and number them all for when we file.
All right. So I would ask the auditors, when I'm looking at the very last page, below the double line, I see point, zero point zero zero. Does that mean that we have a balanced budget at this time?
Yes, sir.
Based on monies available and budget requests submitted that we've approved through the Commissioner's Court?
And you two look on balances and...
Yes, sir. When you're looking at the adjusted income and the adjusted expense, yes, you have a balanced budget.
So is it fair to say this is a perfect budget?
I don't know about perfect, but it is balanced.
Okay. Balanced is an excellent start. It's close to perfection. So with that, now that we have hard copy in front of us, we can entertain any questions amongst ourselves. And the auditors are here, and Jessie Murphy is here, who's helped us from the get-go on getting this in the system.
Okay. The other day, we talked about a few changes.
Yes.
Are those, if you want to speak to a couple of them, that would be great.
So the changes that were made in the previous workshop or in the last workshop was for CDC, a salary adjustment for CDC, which is Department 489, ten and four eighty-nine. A page number, if you want to look at it as we're going, it would be page, oh, it's not page number, I don't have page number.
Oh.
So you just have to look for our Department forty-nine.
Fun, ten, four eighty-nine.
Yes.
And so that change was made to compensate the additional duties that were approved this morning in the job description, updated job description.
Correct. Who was that related to?
Yes. And that was a $600 adjustment.
Yes, and the $600 was added after the two percent.
Correct.
We discussed that.
And did we find out with IT?
Okay, so the next adjustment was for Department 415, Tax Assessor. We increased her hours from twenty-five hours for her part-time to twenty-nine hours. And that's ten, four fifteen. Yes, I'm getting to it.
That's on the department, 415, one twenty?
415, one twenty, yes, ma'am. The next adjustment would be for the IT. $264 was added.
What, what department?
423, 423.
Say that again.
Ten, four twenty-three, the IT department. $264 was added to line item four thirty-three, which was the telephone, mobile, and that was to bring him up to unlimited minutes.
It turned out to be a little cheaper than what we anticipated.
Yeah, it was, well, no, it was $75 a month, but we had already budgeted fifty-three, forty-five. So you have a difference of the twenty, which rounded to twenty-two.
Okay.
Another change you will see is, I believe we discussed this as well, for the district, the court-appointed attorneys. We have court-appointed attorneys in Department, or ten, Funten, Department 407. There's court-appointed attorneys, but there are new lines added to that department. After discussing with Michelle, and she had decided that she wants to be able to break up these civil cases. So for aging and child support, you'll see a line item. You'll see a line item for court. It's all broken down, and you can see those line items under that department. Since Tuck will, the county court at law will be hearing the civil cases that the district courts used to hear or currently hearing, we moved money from the district courts to the 407. So there was no overall change from their bottom line number. It was just reclassified.
Okay, thank you on that.
Budgeted amounts.
And we did our due diligence of looking through the district judges' budgets and seeing what was being spent in each of these categories. And that's how we came up with the dollar amounts to put into those categories.
But again, it wasn't raised or lowered from what we previously had budgeted, you just reallocated.
Yes, sir. And that was with the help of the county court of law department.
Thank you.
And then what was remaining was split between strategic plan, Funten, Department 424. So it was split between strategic planning and miscellaneous. So you'll see an increase in those two line items.
One of the things we questioned the other day was the election at ministry. You were gonna find out about the $3,000?
No, we found out about that, that day. She called back, I believe you had stepped out for a moment. That $3,000, she does need it for fiscal year 2019. And it is in there currently.
I want to commend you for keeping up with our changes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Because it's kind of like a fast tennis match, I know. But I, I do, I commend you for your ability to stay on track and keep us focused. Mary also yourself, but I appreciate it.
I'll second that, Judge. Thank y'all.
Well, just a comment, not a motion. But I'll take your second on it.
I agree with you.
And we didn't make any change the other day because you had already included the SRO officer?
Yes, so that has, yes. That change was made at the American Legion Hall. When we had our workshop, we discussed it at that moment, at that meeting. So that was already in there.
Anybody else have any questions at all?
No, but we did, the auditor and I kind of talked with the city manager Brad Stafford.
You did, okay. And?
He said that they are currently, the Army Corps of Engineers are currently in Washington discussing the funding. So they anticipate it being twenty, 2019.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Team, starting. It may run into the following year also. So he did say that a gentleman with, with, I don't know his name. But what is it?
Well, with FEMA.
With FEMA, did say that hazard mitigation grant money could be used, but he's still not clear on that.
Okay.
It's still a question if it can or if it can't. But listening, listening to Mr. Walker, ours have a designated place to go.
Correct.
So, you know, he said he's just not sure if that's true, but he keeps getting that from FEMA, telling them that those funds could be used. But, you know, we do have strategic plan, you know, so if it should come back up.
He's asking for us to budget something as a donation to help towards this. The Army Corps of Engineers are gonna pay half. And so they have to come up with the other half.
Right.
And he said, of course, I would love to y'all pay for it all, or half of it. And, you know, Ms. Walker told him, well, we don't have that much in the budget for 2019. So if the court wants to provide them with some assistance on that, because it is within the city.
Let me clarify a little bit of that. It's not all within the city.
Okay.
The, the study is gonna be done on Cedar Creek and the, I can't think of the creek that runs through the industrial park, which sits in the county. And that's, that's always been my emphasis on the county portion that, that if you're redirecting water around the city of Nattasoda and you're directing it toward our industrial park.
That's a problem.
Which we already have a problem with businesses out there flooding. It's a problem for the county, you know. And with the growth of the county, that is, right now, the, if I made no mistake, the only industrial park that we have. And there is probably still available, but it is in flood zone, and it does need improvements. Road and Bridge has worked with several of the businesses out there trying to improve the grade and slope and the ditches. But that's a lot of water if it's gonna be redirected at us. So I, that's, my push is that we look, in their study, what that water is gonna do if you're redirecting it toward us, you know.
Could I make a comment? If you were gonna add it to this budget, it sounds like it would come out of fund balance. Unless you were gonna reduce somebody else's amount. If that's the case, it would be the same thing as if you did a budget amendment in the year. Budget amendment is based upon unforeseen circumstances. If you don't know the amount that is sought for, that would be unforeseen.
And he would like to have some more discussion. He says with the FEMA guy to be clear because he doesn't have a real clear understanding on if that hazard mitigation money could be used for that. But we need to know also, if it's earmarked, what we have coming, then we know we can't help there.
Right, I'm, I'm saying for budget purposes, it would be a shot in the dark. It'd be a guess as the number that you're setting aside now. And it would probably come out of fund balance such that would be the same place, potentially, you would take that budget amendment, which would happen later when you know the actual amount.
Okay.
Thank you. But I still want us to, and I'll, I'll be glad to kind of spearhead pursuing, is there additional grant money that we could do? Where we, we get the government, pay for government? That's cool. Thank you, Ms. Pults. And since we have a balanced, an almost perfect budget before us, is there a motion to consider the proposed budget for FY 2018-19 and take action to adopt the budget with a record vote pursuant to Local Government Code 111.008?
I make the motion that we approve the proposed budget for FY 2018-19 and adopt the budget with a record vote pursuant to Local Government Code 111.008.
Okay. Second motion. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Fourteen, which applies to our 2018-19 budget by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Dobianski. We will take a record vote. So Commissioner Mallett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dobianski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I, Judge Joe Futh, aye. So we have five ayes, no nays. The motion carries. That'll take us to Agenda Item Number Eighteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eighteen to adjourn by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.